Good evening and welcome to the January 8th, 2024 Board of Education meeting. The meeting is now called to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move the agenda for Monday, January 8th, 2024, Board of Education regular meeting and work session be approved as set forth, and each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second? This is a roll call vote.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Borchardine?
Aye.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Newman?
President Garlock?
Aye.
Tonight we have two public hearings.
For the Cedar Rapids Community School District, the first one will address the proposed calendar for the school year 2024-2025. Board Secretary Reedstrom, have we received any written correspondence related to the school calendar public hearing on tonight's agenda?
We have not received any written correspondence.
Do we have anyone who has requested to address the board this evening regarding the published hearing?
We have one, Nathan Kuhn. Kuhn?
Hello, my name is Nathan Kuhn. My address is 215 40th Street Drive Southeast, number 202, in Cedar Rapids, Iowa 52403. I am representing the transportation staff in the Teamsters Union 238. I would like to discuss proposed calendar for next school year. As it is currently proposed, hourly transportation staff will be losing 10 days of work, down from 179 days of this year to 169 days. That's two weeks of work, or a full paycheck that we are losing. If you break it down, that is about 6% of our wages, or $927 for attendance, $1,090 for van drivers, and $1,276 for a bus driver. I know that continuing education is being planned for transportation staff during some of those days off, during staff professional learning days, but it's hard to believe that the district will be able to find 60 to 80 hours for continuing education for the transportation department. Bus drivers will also be losing more money because of the loss of Friday afternoon trips that we're able to do with early dismissal on Fridays. It means more trips, especially on Fridays, going on charter buses. I feel this will make it harder to hire and retain transportation staff. It is already difficult for many in the transportation department to make ends meet, and now we are losing even more money. The proposed calendar for next year is going to hurt the transportation staff more than I believe anyone has thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. The public hearing for the proposed 2024-2025 calendar is now officially closed. The second one we'll address tonight is the Kingston Stadium ADA Locker Room Upgrades Project. Board Secretary Reedstrom, have we received any written correspondence related to the Kingston Stadium ADA Locker Room Upgrade Project on tonight's agenda?
We have not.
Do we have anyone who has requested to address the board this evening regarding the published hearing?
No, we have not.
Thank you. The public hearings are now officially closed. We will now hear from those who have requested to address the board. Ryan, do we have any members of the public that have requested to address the board?
We have one person.
With one speaker this evening, you'll be given five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time limit allotted to each speaker. Board Secretary Reedstrom will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. The time is yours to use and may not be yielded to another speaker. If you have submitted a request to address the board and choose not to speak, in the interest of equity and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. In order to abide by the open meetings law, there will be no dialogue between board members and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individual speaking. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. This board has zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Lastly, I'd like to remind our speaker that the board is unable to address any personnel and student matter. There is a process outlined in board policy which provides guidance on how to address and resolve concerns. We ask that speakers refrain from using personal names and information during public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speaker to please state your name and address for the record when called to the podium. Ryan, would you please call our first speaker?
Kevin Weinmore.
I am Kevin Weinmore. My address is 4501 Pineview Drive Northeast in Cedar Rapids. And this evening, I would just like to spend a few moments talking about potentially reinstating the school resource officers. As you know, the SROs were removed in recent years from, I believe McKinley and Roosevelt Middle Schools. And I believe in light of the violent incidents, I believe in Perry and in Des Moines, there's a great deal of good case for putting the SROs back in McKinley and Roosevelt, but also expanding, in other words, placing middle school SROs in addition to the high school SROs in all of the other middle schools. So I believe there's a great deal of interest in having such security, and to the extent that I believe the city council and the mayor have also expressed their support for at least adding back the two removed SROs. As you might understand, this would greatly improve the response time in the potential for a violent gun incident. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. I will now turn the meeting over to Superintendent Grover for her report.
Thank you, President Garlock. Well, thank you, Kevin, for your remarks. This actually opened up my remarks here today, just acknowledging the incident from Perry. Our hearts are broken for our family, staff, and students who were involved in this tragic event last week in Perry, Iowa. Situations like these, they are senseless and troublesome. It serves as a reminder of just how precious life is, and we want to encourage everyone to take a moment to cherish and appreciate their loved ones with a continued focus on safety. Here in Cedar Rapids Community School District, we take the responsibility of providing our students and staff a safe learning environment very seriously. We work closely with the Cedar Rapids Police Department and have five Cedar Rapids Police Department School Resource Officers who work to maintain safety and security within our schools. Our partnership with the police department also includes training and preparing our staff and students on what to do during a crisis. We are committed to continuously evaluating and enhancing security at each of our campuses. Recently, we hired a Safe and Secure Learning Environment Coordinator to spearhead efforts to address safety and security of our students and staff and to implement preventative measures. Last month, the board reviewed Crisis GO, and it is up for approval tonight. With Crisis GO, it is an emergency tool that monitors safety threats in the district and initiates communications with internal teams and the police should a safety threat occur. It offers a comprehensive solution to cover every step of emergency management, from preparedness to recovery. By implementing Crisis GO, we aim to have reliable and efficient emergency management that will prioritize the safety and well-being of everyone involved. As we move forward with Crisis GO, we will have training that will be in alignment with our safety managers. Of course, we know that that is very sensitive information, but those persons involved will have intensive training, and we will continue to communicate as appropriate with our staff, students, and community as we work together to ensure safety and security within our Next up, I would like to address the Harrison rezoning update. Last week, our district officials attended the Cedar Rapids City Zoning Commission meeting. The goal of the meeting was to ask the commission to rezone the Harrison Elementary property to allow for construction of a new school on the site after demolition of the existing structure. Unfortunately, the commission decided to table their decision on rezona until a future date. It is important to note that the rezona is solely about the establishment of a school, and at this juncture, we already have a school there that's on the Harrison site, and we are having to rezone. Anytime there is going to be a renovation that's more than 10,000 square feet, or if there is new construction, we must rezone the property. In the end, it is important, and we appreciate the opportunity to continue this conversation with the commission so that we can make sure that we understand exactly what we are asking, that is to rezone so that there is a school in the Harrison neighborhood. Without the rezoning, we will not be able to do any upgrades or additions that would include anything more than 10,000 square feet or anything new to that property. So we look forward to ensuring that we have heard the concern for having a school within the northwest neighborhood. That is our main objective. So we would look forward to continuing the conversation with the commission regarding this topic. It was also brought to our attention that there are four criteria for rezoning, which includes correction of a technical mistake, consistency with comprehensive plan and other studies, public facilities, services, and sustainability and character. Cedar Rapids Community School District meets all of the four criteria. This is not about whether or not it is a historical building and the future of the building. The rezoning is simply to ensure that we have the opportunity to make upgrades or changes to the Harrison site, and moreover, that we have the opportunity to have a school in that neighborhood, which has been expressed by its patrons. Also, I'd like to bring an update on Taft and Harden. Students at Taft Middle School, they returned from their winter break with some exciting news. The repairs on the dome that houses the school's cafeteria and auditorium and fine arts classrooms have been completed, and they can access the space once again. Repairs to the Harden Dome that houses their cafeteria and fine arts classrooms are still underway, with only two beams left. It was expected to be completed this Friday, but with the impending snow forecast, it's difficult to have a projected completion date. Attention will then turn to the other two domes that house each school's gymnasium. Weather permitting, crews expect to finish the structural repairs on these domes by the end of February. Again, we would like to thank Harden and Taft, their school community, for their patience during this process and ensuring that during this time that our students continue to participate in activities and continue their learning. Do want to make note that our magnet school lottery is now open for next school year, for the 24-25 school year. Magnet schools are theme-based schools, providing another choice for student learning right here within the Cedar Rapids Community School District. We currently offer six magnet schools in our district. Students who live within a magnet school's attendance boundary are automatically enrolled in the school. However, if a student lives outside of their attendance zone and wishes to attend, they must enter the magnet school lottery. Online applications for the lottery will be accepted through Monday, March 4. If you would like to learn more about each of these magnet schools, Cedar Rapids Community School District is hosting a Meet the Magnets event at the downtown Cedar Rapids Public Library from 4:30 to 6:30 PM on January 30. Okay, so, next up, it is a great pleasure to announce that Adam McDonald has been chosen as the district's new District Activities Director. I think he may be the first of his kind for the district, and we are very excited to have him here as we look forward to a comprehensive activities program for our students K-12. Adam has spent five years as a P.E. teacher and a coach and five years in administration. Most recently, Adam was the Activities and Athletics Director for Xavier High School and Ankeny High School. In this new position, Adam will oversee the school's athletic directors and all activities and athletics across the district. His first opportunity today was to address activities with the snow coming, so. Speaking of, as a friendly reminder, we do not have school tomorrow, and it is a district closure due to the impending winter weather. With the plows being out over the next few days, make sure to look for some of the blades of our Cedar Rapids Community School District students painted earlier this fall as part of the city's Paint a Plow program. And for our students, we know how much fun it is to play in the snow. Please be safe, and we ask that all of you take precautions because plows have limited visibility. And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Dr. Grover. Do we have any other board reports? Okay. Moving on to our consent agenda, are there any items that a board member would like to pull for a comment, question, or a separate vote?
President Garlock, I just have a question about the calendar. So I'd like to pull that for a question.
Okay.
Is that all? Oh, I'm sorry. My bad.
Well, yeah, we'll have a presentation.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sure it'll answer my question.
I hope so.
I hope so.
Anything else? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? This is a roll call vote due to the personnel report.
Director Borchardine?
Aye.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
President Garlock?
Moving on to administration, we have a request for the Cedar Rapids Community School District shall approve the resolution for funding and approving the district dropout prevention program in fiscal year 2025 at maximum allowable levels through a combination of general fund resources and modified supplemental amount. The SBRC application completed prior to January 15th, 2024? The FY 2025 dropout prevention funding levels are as follows. Two million, fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars from the general fund. Modified supplement amount, six million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars, as provided in the funding formula. Modified supplement amount is calculated as follows. Seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars, which is the district cost per pupil, times sixteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine, which is the certified October 2021 enrollment, times point zero five, the maximum modified amount. Are there any questions for Corinne? Do we have a motion to approve the request?
I move to approve the request for the Cedar Rapids Community School District shall approve the resolution for funding and approving the district dropout prevention program in fiscal year 2025 at maximum allowable levels through a combination of general fund resources and modified supplemental amount. The SBRC application completed prior to January 15th, 2024.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Borchardine?
Aye.
President Garlock?
For the second administration topic, we have a presentation. This presentation will communicate the feedback received regarding the proposed 2024-2025 school year calendar. Calendar Committee, the floor is all yours.
Thank you. We're a small group tonight with the weather, so I get the joy of listening to the feedback. So we have a proposed calendar that we brought last year, or last, it was last year, but last board meeting, with the change of moving away from early out Fridays. We've had comments open for the last month to garner feedback. We had about 150, 160 comments provided either through our survey or through the community relations email inbox. Those can be developed and driven into four main themes of those. We received considerable amount of support from certain work groups regarding the whole day professional learning. They are in favor of that work and moving away from full day early release. With that said, we did receive work, feedback from various work groups, mainly the hourly work groups and the ideas of losing wages or losing hours due to the 10 days. We do have a point of clarification, which was brought up earlier, the idea that we, within our strategic anchor, we want to develop and promote our staff through professional learning. So we are committed to providing that professional learning through those days that were being cut off. So if it is, for example, we heard 10 days, we will provide continuing education, especially in speaking with transportation in general. The head of transportation manager was very delighted to see that we had that amount of time to be able to provide the learning that staff desire, as well as other hourly employees such as paraprofessionals. One group that we did hear from was our food and nutrition group, them being an enterprise. But due to the flexible and innovative thinking through Carla Hogan, Dr. Grover, as well as Jenny Hook, they were able to come up with a very positive outcome in which we are able to, at no cost, deficit, able to continue to pay our food and nutrition through professional learning. Jenny Hook is working directly with the head, union president, as well as the secretary on how, what that will look like to get those 179 days. So that was flexible thinking, being that the caveat is that they're an enterprise there. We also had some feedback on the language of teacher-directed, teacher-directed time and what that means. We do not have clear guidelines for you tonight on what teacher-directed time looks like. That is intentional and purposeful, as the calendar committee was going through the work, that that would be taken to the district resolution team, where administration and teachers and CREA can collectively and collaboratively create what those guidelines look like. So that will come at the next district resolution team, and that will become more clear as what teacher-directed work time looks like. So those guidelines are coming, but we purposely wanted to take that through district resolution team and not through the calendar committee for that process. And then lastly, what we heard was childcare could be a concern for parents in there. And so we have been actively seeking out ways in which we can provide childcare and we can provide help in that area. If the calendar is approved in such a manner, we can continue to go out with earnest and bring in those ideas and bring those ideas to fruition. And we have certain solutions that will be beneficial to our employees, as well as the greater community on those days to provide childcare and food and nutrition for those students on those professional learning days as well. And we will communicate those options in depth once all of the plans are solidified to allow for early communication on that. So those are the four main themes of our feedback that we received on the proposed 2024-2025 calendar. Any questions?
Thank you, Ryan. Questions? Director Borchardine?
Yes.
Now, now.
Now's the time.
Yep.
Ryan, can you share what work groups were included?
In the calendar committee?
The work groups included in the calendar committee were officially, we had, it was facilitated by communications, myself, as well as CREA. And then we also worked with and through food and nutrition and transportation specifically, as well as used human resources department to look at the work agreements of all work groups involved.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then our continuing education days, are those paid days for staff?
Correct.
That's what I thought. Thank you. And then I didn't hear anything about local employers, if the changing calendar is going to influence how they're using their workforce.
We have not heard from them specifically of that. Our community cabinet, in which Dr. Grover heads, was supportive of that, and that involves community members as well as business leaders. A sampling, not the greater whole, but a sampling of some of our larger employers, and they were in favor of it and supportive of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the board? Do we have a motion to approve the proposed 2024-2025 school year calendar?
So moved.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Aye.
Sorry, Ryan.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Borchardine?
Aye.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
And President Garlock?
Aye.
Thank you.
We will now take a 10-minute recess to prepare for our work session with the Office of Academics. Do we have a motion to recess?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We will call the meeting to order at 6:07.
One inch per hour.
Two inches per hour.
Sixty.
No.
Thanks, Ryan.
Sorry, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
It's just a surprise.
Actually, I feel a lot of minority in our election. We gotta, let's keep this thing going.
My ringtone.
Oh, no.
I now, I now call to order Cedar Rapids Community School District Board of Education's work session with the Office of Academics. Tonight, we'll engage in this discussion with our Chief Academic Officer, Corinne Thurlsen, as well as representatives from Instruction Empowerment. I'll now hand the meeting over to Corinne and her team. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity this evening to talk a little bit about, or to visit a little bit about some of the work that we have been doing in the Office of Academics this year. As you remember, a few weeks ago now, we met with each, with you as, on our board work session day, and we talked a lot about some of our data and some of the pieces that we're working on in the Office of Academics. We're gonna take a deeper dive tonight into some of the work that we are going to ask, and I would like to take this time to introduce a couple of people before we go a little bit further. This is my friend, Michelle Fitzgerald. She has been helping plan and work with the Instructional Empowerment Group. She's been with us today, working on some things with our plan, and she will have part of the presentation here in, in a few minutes about her company and what, what they're going to be offering our district. I would also like to take this opportunity to let you know that the Office of Academics, we have a couple of members here. One for sure, Adam Zimmerman, Director of Innovation, Executive Director of Innovation. He's worked tirelessly with me on these plans with Michelle. And we have Jennifer Nury here tonight. Right here. And Dan DeVore. Hi. Hi, Dan. He snuck in. Two principals that were working with us today on some of our classroom visits, and they're here in case we have any questions for how this might impact principals. Okay? So with that, we're gonna begin with a video.
Yeah, short video.
Short video.
Short video.
5:52, and the Air Force has a problem. They've got good pilots flying better planes, but they're getting worse results, and they don't know why. And for a while, they blamed the pilots. They even blamed the technology. And they eventually got around to blaming the flight instructors. But it turned out that the problem was actually with the cockpit. Let me explain. Imagine you're a fighter pilot. You're operating a machine that, in some cases, can travel faster than the speed of sound, and where issues between success and failure, sometimes life and death, can be measured in split seconds. If you're a fighter pilot, you know that your performance depends fundamentally on the fit between you and your cockpit. Because after all, what good is the best technology in the world if you can't reach the critical instruments when you need them the most? But this presents a challenge for the Air Force, because obviously, pilots are not the same size. So the issue is, how do you design one cockpit that can fit the most individuals? For a long time, it was assumed that you could do this by designing for the average pilot. That almost seems intuitively right. If you design something that fit for the average-sized person, wouldn't it fit most people? It seems right, but it's actually wrong. And 60 years ago, an Air Force researcher, Gilbert Daniels, proved to the world just how wrong this really is and what it was costing us. Here's how he did it. He studied over 4,000 pilots, and he measured them on 10 dimensions of size, and he asked a very simple question. How many of these pilots are average on all 10 dimensions? The assumption was that most of them would be. Do you know how many really were? Zero. Gilbert Daniels proved there was no such thing as an average pilot. Instead, what he found was that every single pilot had what we call a jagged size profile, right? Means not, it means, means you're not, no one's at the same on every dimension. And this makes sense. Just because you're the tallest person doesn't mean you're the heaviest. It doesn't mean you have the broadest shoulders or the longest torso. But this is tricky, because if every pilot has a jagged size profile, and you design a cockpit on average, you've literally designed it for nobody.
Why is instructional design important? We show you that video for a couple of reasons. And I think it might be obvious reasons, but what I'd like to ask is, what did this video say to you as a Board of Education? And why do you think we showed that today when you think about instructional design of our classrooms?
You have to differentiate based on who's in your classroom and how you can best, you have to differentiate based on who's in your classroom and their needs and how we can best serve those individuals instead of the collective, assuming they're all the same.
It's accepting the diversity that we have in our learning community, and how do we address every student, not just an average student?
So true. And instructional design is sort of like that, that cockpit idea, right? Like, it's almost easy to imagine that you can create a social studies lesson, or a science lesson, or a math lesson that will meet most needs. But in reality, like today, we spent our day in one of our middle schools, and there is not one child coming into those classrooms that is the same as another. Not one. And so instructional design is something a little bit like that cockpit, that when we design a lesson, or design a day, or design a period for a student, we have to be very in tune with what their needs are, where we want to go with that, and what is expected of each of those learners. So it's important as we think about every learner future-ready, that is our, that's our mission. And based on our blueprint, it is imperative that we consistently comprehend and analyze the comprehensive development of each child. And that's really hard to do. But it's imperative. It's, it's, it's so critical that we think about instructional design like we do a cockpit, because we miss so many opportunities. We miss so many opportunities for kids if we design for the middle, or we design for the top, or we design for the bottom. We miss, we miss so many. So I want to set the stage with that video, and I thank you, Ryan, for finding that video for us tonight, just to put us in a headspace of how important each and every day is for our kids. Our story tonight will take you through five Ws and an H. Questions of school improvement. We'll be communicating the why, what, how, where, and when, and who of our plans to elevate student achievement, promote equitable outcomes, and increase college and career readiness. We're confident that with a rigorous and comprehensive structure, that it is possible to do exactly what we're going to lay out this evening. I ask that you keep an eye out for connections to our other strategic anchors throughout the process tonight. Ryan?
Yeah, so I've been asked as the resident historian on our team, which is hard to believe. Where have we been? And so just talking through a little bit about where we've been over the course of, let's say, 10 years or so. Our district has always been on the forefront of adopting cutting-edge school improvement frameworks. Even before getting the guidance from the state on we need a school improvement framework, we implemented high-reliability schools. High-reliability schools is a site-based school improvement process. The state came also with ESSA, or Every Student Succeeds Act. The state came also with ESSA, or Every Student Succeeds Act, with differentiated accountability. And within differentiated accountability, you have the SAMH process, which is also a school improvement process. So within our district, we have two school improvement processes, HRS and the SAMH. And we cross-reference those and make those to, to create our own school improvement process for Cedar Rapids Community School Districts. And we have to crosswalk those quite a bit, which can get somewhat muddied. During Dr. Grover's listening tours last spring, a few teachers and administrators pointed out the lack of clarity and cohesion in some of our school improvement processes. But we're confident we can address those issues and take the concrete steps forward to create a more comprehensive school improvement process. So just wherever we've been, we have HRS, we also have SAMH, two comprehensive school improvement plans, frameworks for us, that we cross-reference and, to make our own. And sometimes that becomes unclear. So we're going today on where are we right now?
So this is a slide that's in reference to just maybe the highlights of where we are.
I'm not used to this microphone stuff.
So if you remember back to our boardwork session, Craig and I were able to spend a little bit of time with you on some of our data points with our district. And while we have diversity, and we're very proud of our diversity in our district, it comes with some challenges. And the challenges are not insurmountable. I'll just say that. We are confident in our ability to provide a supportive and inclusive learning environment that meets the needs of all of our students. So we have some lofty goals that I think are important to approach this evening and talk about. Right now, we have, we're underachieving in both English, Language Arts, and Math. By June of 2027, our goal is to have 80% of our students to score proficient or advanced on the Iowa Statewide Assessment. Currently, we are at 63.8%. In 2021, we were at 60%. In math, you see that our goal is also to have 80% by 2027. We are currently at 59.7%, up from 51.3% in 2021. When we look at our subgroups, we realize that we still have some work to do in addressing the academic gaps of our usually marginalized students. Our aspiration since 2017 has been to raise achievement to 80% since 2017, and decrease academic gaps by 20%. However, we have observed that even after several years, we have not made significant progress. We acknowledge that running a school district is a complex task with the several factors that could influence our outcomes. Hence, we have taken time to evaluate our situation, and based on the information available to us and the research conducted, we are proposing a solution that builds on our past successes while inspiring a brighter future. And I just want you to pause on those, that graphs, those graphs. Our white, black, ELL, IEP, and low SES, none of which are achieving at the 80% mark. So we continuously go back to the quote by Deming, "Every system is perfectly designed to get the results that it does." I would like you to discuss what it means to you with a partner. Now, I know I brought this up, and I think it's important to talk about it again in terms of some of the changes that we're going to be asking for in our instructional work. What does it mean to you when you look at our data, and this, and the quote comes to your attention, "Every system is perfectly designed to get the results that it does"? Just talk to a partner.
Hi.
If I could bring you back.
You didn't get a chance.
No, that's great. I prefer to hear your comments.
President Garlock, what did you come up with?
Vice President Tominski and I were talking about, you have to, you have to know what your goal is, you have to know what you're trying to achieve, what's the outcome. And if you're not making progress to that outcome, then obviously the system you're using needs to be reevaluated.
Any opposition to that or change?
I wouldn't say opposition. Director Borchunin, do you want to bring up the point you brought up about the pace of the goal?
Sure. You know, I am just, it is an aggressive timeline. We did, you know, increase 3.2% in English over two years, and you're looking at a 16.2% increase over another two years. So that's a pretty aggressive goal. I think, you know, I want to make sure that we're taking care of our staff and our teachers and keeping that in mind. But I do think that, you know, every system is designed to do what it does, so if we can get a framework from the top down that pulls everyone together, then maybe we're all using shared language and common practice. And if we have that, then it'll be easier to, kind of as a system, from a system's perspective, track and grow.
Which I think is a very good point. And also, when she mentioned that, so then I thought about the pace that we've already been moving at, right? Where are we? Is that the thing, where we are right now? And so what has contributed to the pace that we have already been moving at, that give us the data that we have, that is not very pleasing? So understanding that even more.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
How about from this side? Yeah?
One of the comments I did make was, "There has been some progress."
You got me.
You got me, okay. There has been some progress, and like Director Borchunin said. One of the things I believe that's going to be important, we got to get everybody on the same page, of the instruction that we are providing, is if everyone's doing their own thing, we're going to stay right where we're at right now.
I love that, because it is a systematic approach, and it's a systematic approach of support, too. So we have aggressive goals. I think that's okay. I really do. I think our timeline is where it needs to be. I like stretch goals. I do. I think it makes, it makes us work that much harder, but it also makes us want it even more. I want to turn to the next page, and I did talk much about this with you last time I was before you, and that is three very important pieces of our academic team that we are tightly aligning to and trying to become as systematic as we can, which is high-quality core instruction, which we'll talk with you about with Instructional Empowerment, our curricular alignment, which needs to be tightened, and college and career readiness and connected learning, which we'll be addressing that, I believe, at our next board meeting. So we have casted a vision in the Office of Academics, and we have created action steps towards these goals. These steps are aimed at elevating students' plans, pathways, and passions, and tonight's focus will be on delivering high-quality core instruction. I will also come to you at other times for curriculum adoptions, those type of things, but tonight we're going to really focus on high-quality core instruction.
So we're going to first have the conversation of, those of you that are familiar with Simon Sinek, you start with your why. So why are we going where we're going, and why are we on this path forward? So we're going to watch videos again. So here, I'm more of a video learner than a reader. So here is the first video that we would like you all to watch.
This is History of Art 100. Will be following Dr. Staunton's syllabus. Any questions so far?
Your name.
Why don't you go first?
Connie Baker.
Katherine Watson, nice to meet you.
Dr. Watson, I presume?
Not yet. And you are?
Giselle Levy.
Giselle. If someone could get the...
Susan Delacorte.
Thank you, Susan Delacorte. From the beginning, man has always had the impulse to create art. Can anyone tell me what this is?
Wounded Bison, Altamira, Spain, about 15,000 B.C. Joan Brandwin.
Very good, Joan. Despite the age of these paintings, they are technically very sophisticated.
Because of the shading and the thickness of the lines as it moves over the hump of the bison.
Is that right? Yes, that's exactly right. Next slide.
This one you are probably less familiar with. It was discovered by archaeologists in 1879, Lusco, France, dates back to 10,000 B.C. Single out because of the flowing lines depicting the movement of the animal.
Impressive name.
Herd of horses.
I meant yours.
We call her Flicka.
Elizabeth Warren, they call me Betty.
Very good. Betty is also correct. Just because something is ancient doesn't mean that it is primitive. For example, next slide, please.
Maestrisis and His Queen, 2470 B.C. It's a funerary statue of the Pharaoh and his queen, originally intended to preserve the Pharaoh's ka.
All right, let's watch this one.
You tell me. Carcass, by Soutine, 1925.
It's not on the syllabus.
No, it's not. Is it any good? Come on, ladies. There's no wrong answer. There's also no textbook telling you what to think. It's not that easy, is it?
All right, no, it's not good. In fact, I wouldn't even call it art. It's grotesque.
Is there a rule against art being grotesque?
I think there's something aggressive about it.
So we talk about these, and we ask the question, what is engagement? And what does engagement mean to you? And how do we want our students to engage? So we come back to the idea of continuous school improvement. And what we would like you to do is to think about, and grab any quote, and read the quote. You don't have to read it out loud, just read it to yourself.
Oh, God.
I like this one.
School engagement is a very complex construct, and has been widely studied and defined in various ways. So as you read your quote, would anyone like to bring some meaning to their quote, or what that quote means to you as you read about engagement?
I don't want to talk about my quote. I'd rather talk about the video.
Go ahead. This is the work session. I'm a teacher, let's things flow.
I mean, clearly in the video, there were, there were students who were able to regurgitate information, but when it came to actually thinking about a piece of art and interpreting that piece of art, they didn't have the skills to do that work. So engagement, I think, for our students looks like learning how to think, rather than just regurgitating information. And that shift is big and sometimes scary for our staff. And so how do we help them with engagement in a way that works for them in their classroom?
So would the first class be engaged? The first video?
Well, they thought they were, because they seemed really smart. But no. They, they couldn't think about art and come up and, you know, generate their own ideas. They were just borrowing someone else's.
The other thing I noticed, it wasn't as if they weren't necessarily not able to, it's that there was a different structure to the learning, right? So initially, they were just, here's the content, here's the fact, facing forward. And then all of a sudden, people were turning, they were having conversations, they were engaging with one another, they were provoking new thoughts. And so that's where that learning occurs, because you're, you're learning about the opinions of everybody else and how, you know, that shapes their thinking. So just that expansion of thought was taking place in that second. So to me, that is engaged.
Did anyone pay attention to the teacher? As you compare and contrast the teacher in both videos, what did you notice?
One of the things I noticed when, after she returned the second time, she changed her instruction. She, because they, I mean, and she changed, because, and I think that was important for the students, because then they had to think, because they weren't prepared. Like President Garlock said, it was all memorized. They took it all in, just spit it back out, and then she threw them a curve, and they were lost. So she got ahead of the game on the students.
So you're saying, like, she created space intentionally for creative learning and thinking?
Yes.
And she was having more fun.
And where was she?
So for her, being the teacher, engaging in that type of learning is fun for the teachers, too.
Where was she? Physically, where was she?
She moved.
Yeah, she was out with the students.
She went to the students and joined them and sit right down there.
The metaphorical sage on the stage, or the facilitator, the coach of learning. You saw that physical movement. Great conversation. Anyone like to add any more? Either your quote or from the video. Lot of research quotes. I mean, they're in this film.
Yeah, and I think...
So what, yeah, one thing that, to consider on this is the idea that we have been using HRS and differentiated accountability to systematically analyze our inputs and outputs. But what we haven't been able to do is analyze what engagement looks like in the classroom. That is one thing between these two school improvement programs, frameworks, is what does an engagement, engaged student look like? And that's the part that we believe we're missing, as when you look at these school improvement frameworks, we take, talk about strategies, we talk about this, but yet, we don't talk about what the student and how the student is engaged. So we could walk into the classroom in the first video and say, that's a very engaged classroom, because you see compliant students raising their hands, answering the questions. Or you could walk into the second classroom and say, that is not an engaged classroom. That classroom is out of control. So what do we need to think about when we're thinking about engagement, and what does that mean for brain science and the research behind actively engaged brain? What do your, what do the principals think about?
Okay. Engagement on the second video.
What do, what do we think about that?
Yeah. How do you feel about that? Is it a good feeling, or?
So I think, you know where I come from with City View, right? And I think that's it, right? We want to give them the tools so that they can make the things, do the projects, engage with the community in a way that's meaningful, so that the learning's not just stale, standard on a paper, but something they're grappling with.
Good, awesome. Thank you. What'd you got?
Yeah, I would, I would echo what Dan said. On the first one, you know, a few students knew the content, but you have no idea what the other students know, or even if they could answer, possibly regurgitate, I think, what you said. Or even if they could answer, possibly regurgitate, I think what you said, on a test, do they really have a deep understanding? Or is it just memorized and, you know, put back out? Where the second one, I think, provides opportunity to see students engaged and hear. And I even saw some, like, disagreeing, like, what do you mean that's grotesque? You know, some appropriately, like, challenging someone else's thinking in a respectful manner. So I do think, personally, I think that's where we wanna get kids and engage in that learning.
And how important is that right now, when challenging thinking and being able to understand, you know, another side or another opinion, it is very important, right? And this inattention was, mine was all about inattention. I think it's also interesting, we have the, we think about the word inattention, then we associate maybe a child with inattention. But that happens in a lot of different forms, whether you're, you know, at maybe the highest achieving child in the classroom. If you're not engaged in the learning, you're still inattentive in a way, right? So just keeping that at the forefront, too, of like, what does that look like at, with every child in every classroom?
That would really help with that, so I like it.
Yeah, and you know...
Okay, yeah, let's move on.
So, interesting though.
My one concern there would be, speaking of time, would be time, because those kinds of interactions take more time out of a classroom than direct instruction, like lecture-based instruction. So have fun figuring that out.
So, we're all learners, and I have learned a lot from Michelle, even in the short time I've known her. And I wanna give her enough time to help us understand the direction we would like to go under the direction of the Office of Academics. So Michelle, if you could begin in helping us help our board understand where we're headed.
Absolutely. Am I good on the microphone? Michelle Fitzgerald, I am originally from suburbs of Chicago, now live in Florida, 'cause I try to avoid snow. Thank you for this. Yes. But just so you know a little bit about me, I've been a middle school principal, a middle school teacher principal, chief academic officer, and an area superintendent, which is like your chief of schools. So 32 years in education, long time in education, studying it a lot. Got my doctorate from Northern Illinois University, where I, my dissertation was on student involvement in the formative assessment process. All about students being active participants in their learning and not passive recipients. And so, excuse me, so I'm very excited to be here today to talk with you about instructional empowerment. I absolutely love working for instructional empowerment. Wish I had had some of this when I was the area superintendent in the Tampa area. You know, and I've been in three different states as well, Illinois, Missouri, and Florida, working in education, and now I travel the country. And I get to meet amazing people like you. And we've already worked with Cedar Rapids a little bit on defining a vision of instruction. And let me tell you, they are fantastic, because they are exactly engaging in the conversations you're engaging. Your academic team, led by your superintendent, with your chiefs, and all the assistant superintendents, and now the principals, are involved in this conversation. And so at Instructional Empowerment, and by the way, if I say IE, we put an acronym to everything in education, so IE stands for Instructional Empowerment. But I really want you, for you to understand who we are as a company. This is our social mission. We are determined to end the cycle of poverty and eliminate, really, all achievement gaps by empowering all students to achieve grade-level proficiency. There's a reason our name is Instructional Empowerment. We believe in empowering all. We want to empower students, we want to empower teachers, we want to empower leaders. Education is one of the hardest jobs out there, and they need the support that we can give them in moving forward. Next slide. What really sets Instructional Empowerment apart is we are also an applied research center. Not only is everything we do based on research, but we are also able to back up our work with our own research. We have a, our executive director for research has her PhD. She is certified by What Works Clearinghouse, if you know that. That is something that as educators, we look for something that has gone through What Works Clearinghouse to tell us, 'cause anybody can put data together and say, this works. Our research through our Applied Research Center is actually SA Level 2 certified, meaning we have been proven that our work does help turn around schools. So that's something that definitely sets us apart from other companies. Also, what sets us apart, the next slide, are some amazing partnerships that we have in the education world. We are a very high-performing, we are the highest-performing external operator. Some states require, if a school is low-performing enough for an external operator to come in, we have 100% track record in schools that we have gone in and been the external operator. We also have a fantastic track record for schools that we've gone in for turnaround work. The work here at Cedar Rapids is more than just turnaround, it's going to be district-wide, which is exciting. But there are some districts where we have gone in just to work with targeted turnaround schools. We have a, I'm sorry, can we go back? Thank you. We also have a research partner with Castle, which is for social-emotional learning. And we have a fantastic partnership with Harvard University in our effective teams work. We work on making sure that the instructional leadership teams are highly effective teams. You cannot be working on school turnaround with a school leadership team that's not working as an effective team. So when you work with Instructional Empowerment, we have three areas that we support. One is our model of instruction for deeper learning. One is coaching, or shoulder-to-shoulder coaching. And one is a metrics-based solution. I'm going to focus right now on the model of instruction for deeper learning. You all just talked about wanting to think about instruction and talking about that. So that's what I'm going to focus on today with you. When we talk about our model of instruction, the IE model of instruction, I have here, we actually think of instruction as three different types, but I'm only going to give you these two today. We have the typical classroom. In the typical classroom, what we see is 80% to 100% of direct instruction. Teacher talking at kids for that chunk of time. And as you can see in the graphic, we have the teacher standing at the front of the room, kind of like that teacher, it's very good that you changed that up. Talking at the students, the arrows are going one way from teacher to student. The students are magically absorbing everything the teacher said and able to retain it. What happens is that bottom part is an actual brain scan. We've worked with our CEO, Michael Toth, has written a book with David Souza, who is a renowned neuroscience, education neuroscience researcher. And that is a brain scan that shows when somebody is listening, what small percent of the brain is actually activated. So in a typical classroom, if we are looking at 80 to 100% of teachers' direct instruction to students, that we would say that your students' brains are activated that small portion for a majority of their day. But let's look at the other side, which is the IE model of instruction. In the IE model of instruction, we would look at 30% direct instruction. We are not saying that direct instruction is not needed. Students still need to hear from the teacher. And we would be looking at 70% teamwork, students working in teams. Teams also engage in enough independent practice so that they can engage in the teamwork. So we're not saying it's direct instruction and then teaming. We still need kids to be independently active in their learning. A team culture develops where students peer teach, they support each other, they debate, which is what we saw. Principal Newry also mentioned that in that second clip, where the one said, well, why does it have to be grotesque, why does grotesque have to be bad? They reason together with challenging tasks requiring deep learning, productive struggle, and interdependence among the members to ensure everyone reaches his or her fullest potential. We want kids engaged in productive struggle of rigorous tasks. That's how the brain literally fires and gets those additional neurons going. And that's how we get that picture, then, of the brain where the person is doing the explaining and coaching. So in the IE model of instruction, we would wanna see 70% of the time your students' brains engaged, because they are the ones doing the explaining, they are the ones doing the coaching. Our model of instruction has four levers. Our four levers are target task alignment, student-led teaming, collective agency, you want me to do it? And formative assessment. Again, completely research-based. This would not be new to anybody in education. We've put it together into a very nice model of instruction with the research behind it. And we also, I'll tell you this, wait, which one do I push? Did it work? Oh, it did. Didn't move on here. We say, so we've put this all together for our teachers. So how do we get immediate implementation of our model of instruction? We wanna see immediate, we put the resources in the hands of the students. It's absolutely important, again, back to independent critical thinkers or active participants in their learning. We put the resources in the hands of students, and we provide shoulder-to-shoulder support of leaders and teachers. We do not, or instructional, and instructional coaches. We do not become the principal of the building. We coach the principal of the building, shoulder-to-shoulder, so that when we leave, it is sustainable. We do not go in and take over classrooms and become the teacher. We build the capacity of your instructional coaches to be able to support your teachers in the implementation of this model of instruction, so that when we leave, this is the way of work in Cedar Rapids schools. So this is an example of what the resources look like. Every level, there are six levels to our model of instruction. Each one comes with a toolkit that has teacher resources and student resources. Student resources are laminated, the teacher resources are not. That's a very quick, easy way for teachers to know, is this for students or is this for teachers? The first thing we have there, the top left, is a summarizing mat. It's where, when we put that map out, that mat, it is not intended to be a graphic organizer. It is intended to be, if I'm a team of four, and the teacher poses a task or a question that's worthy of me with the summarizing mat, I myself do my independent work first in one of the outside frames. And then as a team, we come together and we challenge each other to come up with a summary that we then put in the middle. Okay? We will coach your teachers and your students to be able to get to that. We have collaborative, we want teams working together to complete the task. This requires supporting your teachers and planning, because you cannot just put a worksheet in front of students and ask them to collaborate on that. It has to be an interdependent task that's worthy of working in teams. We have self-management, where students interact responsibly. We also have the roll cards that you can see there. What happens when we put kids in teams? Not only do we want them talking to each other, we want them accepting the leadership roles that come with being on a team. Because the teacher is no longer the sage on the stage. They are the guide on the side. And they're, so they can't get to every team all the time. These leadership roles allow your students to become the active leaders of their team so that learning continues even if there's a breakdown. They know what they need to do next if there's a breakdown in learning.
Let me ask that question there.
Yes.
So, because we're looking at that self-management, and then there's the 70% of time that would be like the collaborative teamwork, I see a little bit further that it shows a decrease in behaviors. I'm wondering if there's a way to think about that 70% instructional time instead of it being as a, an additional burden to hit content, that it's actually lessening the time of behavior and classroom management? So there's maybe a trade-off with teaching time and behavior management time? Is there any information on that?
Yeah, so we know from our work with Bob Marzano, Dr. Bob Marzano, as structures and systems come into play, so we have these, a lot of these roles in play. The tasks are interdependent, so they are tasks that require kids to talk to each other. Because they are now heavily engaged in their learning, behavior decreases throughout the classroom, yes. But again, it's about making sure that the tasks are truly tasks that will allow kids to be in productive struggle. They're not going to be frustrated, we cannot put them in frustration. We have to do productive struggle, which is just barely out of their, where they are, which is why we need to be at content complexity of the grade-level standard. But then when they're working in their teams, we know that as long as we have the structures in place, behavior does decrease. Behavior issues, referrals do decrease.
And this might be drilled down too far, but those teams that you kept referencing, are those changed up regularly so that they're getting a variety of?
We recommend about one, every quarter or so, we would divide up the teams. It's not every week, because you want them to learn each other, work with each other. We have ways that we help the teachers identify who should be on a team. We do have a protocol that they would learn in Model of Instruction 101 that talks about how do we put the kids into teams? So our coaches, again, we will help coach them to figure out how to put the teams. We want the roll cards shifted as well. Because you can imagine, the kids that wanna be quiet, oh, I'll be a team member. No, no, we want every child to be the learning monitor, to be the facilitator. So we would want those moved as well.
Thank you.
Yes. This shows, this slide is the six levels. So we have levers and levels, six levels of the model of instruction. And again, each one has a toolkit that comes with it, so these are the examples of the toolkit. The levels and therefore the toolkits intentionally build upon each other. This is extremely well thought out and intentional of what is MOI, Model of Instruction 101, what do we do in 201, 301, et cetera. And we typically see in schools, two levels are implemented each year, because you wanna provide the professional learning on it, and then you wanna give teachers that safe practice time to implement it and receive feedback before they have the next professional learning. And then this slide talks about, again, we're thinking about that, I'm always gonna come back to the brain. Because when we have that first classroom, where the teacher is the one doing all the explaining and coaching, there's the brain that is activated. Whereas in the other classroom, we want it to be the student. So think about flipping the brains, that's what this work will do. Flipping the brains to where it's the kids who have the brain that's more active. We can, let's go on to the research that supports the work. We have a, I told you we have metrics, and so let me talk a little bit about our rigor appraisal real quickly. Rigor appraisal is done three to four times a year by an instructional empowerment employee, where we come into the school and we do what's called a rigor walk. And we interview teachers, we interview the principal, the assistant principal, the leadership team. And we're able to come up with a score, a metric, on a 12-point scale with different pillars for our rigor appraisal that will help you as a school district know, is rigor improving? Or is the rigor increasing in your schools? When you see this, our research shows that our rigor appraisal has a very strong statistical significance in determining ELA achievement and an approaching strong significance in math. Meaning, districts could use our rigor appraisal, districts and schools could use our rigor appraisal data to gauge or predict student achievement on your Iowa ISAS. Also, what our research shows is that the more coaching days you receive from IE, the more student achievement. That's again, because this is not about a quick fix, this is about sustainable results. This is about working shoulder-to-shoulder with your leadership teams or your instructional coaches, your teachers, to make this, this is not about... coaches, your teachers to make this, this is not about fixing anything. This is about putting systems in place. You talked about systems earlier. This is about putting systems in place where this is sustainable once we leave. And so this research shows here that our coaching days are correlated with raising student achievement. And so the more coaching days we have in a school, the higher the achievement went And the reason schools keep going up the longer they partner with us is because the capacity keeps growing to the point of sustainability. Again, this is about making this sustainable. So we've had some districts that have stayed with us for a while. It takes time for the coaching to mature. We are building the capacity in systems and in the people when we come and work with you. That is why it sticks and why our work sustains over time. And looking at this one, this is the one that you were just referring to about the student behaviors. As schools increased their scores on the rigor appraisal, they saw decreased rates of student behavior referrals and suspensions. And the findings were statistically significant. Why? Because kids are happy. Why? Because teachers are happy. I love that you got that connection. We have literally had people say to us, our teachers, students have said to us, our teachers are happy because of the way they are now instructing. And so when people are happy, they stay in school. They come to school. They don't always get in trouble with the behavior. And finally, student attendance increased. Again, kids are happy, teachers are happy, attendance is increasing. So that is me.
Okay, so the next piece of this.
I just, I had a quick question about, so as you're laying out, you know, productive struggle of rigorous tasks, how do screens interfere with that? When you're talking about the brain, what does that look like with learning, turning things on, off? We know screens are a struggle.
Yeah, well, I've seen the research behind how bad screens are and yet I still go on my screen every night before I go to bed. But we will certainly work with a district that has, like, I know you guys are one-to-one, so I don't know if you're asking more like, do I know the research behind the screens?
I just wonder how, in the classroom, when you're talking, we're just with that image of the brain, I keep seeing and as we all know what screens do to our brains, like, how does that interfere with these learning increases? Has been, there any research behind that?
Right, but I would, I guess I would throw it back at you and think, when kids are on their screens, are they explaining and coaching?
I don't know, I would hope so.
So that's what we have to make sure, right? We have to make sure that our, whatever, that we are intentional with our tasks for kids, whether it's on a screen or not on a screen, that whatever we're asking them to do would require them to explain and coach, which would require the more part of the brain activating. Does that make sense?
Easy to, right, right. It makes sense. I just, I know it's easy to, it's hard to monitor what students are doing on their screens and how they're engaged. So I just wonder, you know.
And what we have found across the country is a lot of people with screens, kids are not using them the way teachers intended. They are, I've seen TikTok and I've seen, yes, I've seen things that you would, movies, like they're on Netflix watching movies. So there is something to say that we still have to be very intentional with the screen. It's about the planning. It's about supporting teachers that they can, that they can create those tasks. Thanks for that question.
I have just a few questions that I don't expect an answer to tonight, but in order for us to be responsible consumers and transparent to the public, I do have just a few questions. Just as far as the Applied Research Center, I'm just wondering, do you have controls in place to avoid confirmation bias?
Yes, and I will definitely let you speak with our Executive Director of Research, Dr. Lindsay Basilio. She would be one that could answer all that. Oh, yes, they have everything. And our CEO is the president of the, I forget what his title is, but he definitely works with the Applied Research Center as well. But yes, all of that is taken into account. That's why I stressed, we also have an article about ready to come out because, but it's taken a while because it has to get peer reviewed, you know? So we go through the full-blown everything you need to, to be truly research-based.
And then the other question is about the Wallace and Gates Foundation. Are they a funding partner?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. So how will we do it? I, I think that I should be transparent and say we've already been in the exploring phase. So if you look at this slide, we are in quarter two, almost in quarter three of the 23-24 school year. The exploring phase has been, we have exposed this learning to all principals, all of our coaches, our cabinet, our academic team. And a lot of that was in determining if we were going to bring it to you. If we thought that this was something that would be beneficial to our kids in our district. And we have some things in place upon approval, starting with teachers in some of our buildings February 5th because we think it's that good. So if you look at this screen, we will be defining some of this work and planning for some of this work, quarter three. Quarter four and quarter one of next year is a high learning time for everyone and implementing would begin next fall. We would not be looking for buildings to be sustaining without coaching from either the academic team or instructional empowerment for another year. We know that this takes a lot of time with planning, curriculum, rewriting curriculum, establishing our essential standards and learning targets and helping teachers get to a level of sustainment. So, yeah.
Corinne, can I ask a question? Does this really represent a change in the way teachers were taught to educate students? And if so, we all know how change goes sometimes. What have you done to overcome the resistance that is probably natural in that process?
The answer to your first question is yes, it is different. It's also different than the way they were taught. So yes, this is a shift for teachers. This is not anything they've done, you know, they've done nothing wrong. Your teachers are fantastic, the ones that I've seen. What have we done? Well, I can tell you, one thing that Cedar Rapids is absolutely doing right is spending the time in the, you call it the learning? No, the exploring phase.
Exploring phase.
And really getting to that why and getting to that understanding, this is what we want our instruction, this is what we want our classrooms to look like. And they've really spent a lot of time doing that. We started with cabinet as Corinne just mentioned, now with principals, the teachers. Some of the teachers will get this on February 5th. Teachers will be involved in some portrait sessions that will be talking about what does a student look like, you know, a graduate look like, a high-agency learner is what we call them. So we know that not everybody will be on board right away. So we adopt the philosophy of a coalition of the willing where you will be looking for, not necessarily every teacher will be on board right away, you'll be looking for the ones that will. Every school will have, every teacher that's identified in the schools will participate in the professional learning and certainly have access to the coaching and all that. Some will dig their heels in, some have. But we still do the coalition of willing where we find the ones that want to be. And then eventually, when they start to see, people are happy, wait, things are going really well in that classroom, kids are loving it, kids want to learn this way, and kids are some of your best critics, right? Why are we doing this in this classroom and not in this classroom? That will then start to spread and get to every teacher really wanting to implement this.
I'm really concerned about how this changed, because it is a total change. And what is it replacing exactly? One of the systems that have already been in place that they've already, they are familiar with and that they've been using. So just to focus on the teachers who are willing to jump in and then the rest of them who are not, that concerns me, especially when this is such a big change.
Right. Well, and everybody will be getting the professional learning. So everybody will get the kits. Every teacher will get the kits. Every teacher will get the professional learning. Every teacher has access to the coach. And we will be working with the coaches on how do you build that coalition of the willing? But one of your biggest mistakes as a leader would be saying, I've got to get everybody on board. I can't do this until I have everybody on board because you're always going to have somebody saying, nah, I'm not ready. And then that can, that can ruin it for everybody. So we want to get in there, give the PD, show how great this is, the professional development. And then we will build your, remember, we don't take over for teachers. We're going to build your coaches on how do they build the coalition of the willing.
So what does this replace? The system that we're talking about right now, what does this replace?
I'm going to look at you.
I'm going to say this. It replaces traditional teaching where the teacher is at the front of the room all of the time. So I, this is helping teachers with the learning needed. And I think it comes down to a couple things. One, there's brain research behind this. When you see all of those things. And the information to, that we have shared with instructional coaches, which they will be trained in this as well, is that we can, we can lead, we can coach, and then we can learn and have our professional development support this with this type of learning.
I would bring us back to the beginning of our conversation where we talked about the school improvement frameworks and using the SAMI as well as the HRS model. Within the HRS model is our new art and science of teaching in which we talk about elements. But some of the elements in which we talk about, the teachers and the coaches and the principals have been yearning for, specific strategies on how to engage students in cognitively complex tasks. So this isn't replacing, this isn't switching, this is a snap on giving the actual strategy instead of talking about what is a cognitively complex task? I'm going to coach you around that. This gives you the strategy in which to get the students into cognitively complex tasks. And that's something our teachers and principals and coaches have been asking for. What are the specific strategies? And so when we come back to what we talked about earlier, it was, we have school improvement models, we don't have specific strategies. And this will give us the strategies in which to do that. And so when you, when you think about what's going away or what's this, this is helping in addition to the strategy.
So this is just an add-on?
We talk about coaching.
Right.
This will continue to be coaching.
Right.
But now they have something to coach around. We talk about school improvement. This will continue to be school improvement, but specifically with common language around that. We talk about formative assessments, specifically formative assessments, task alignment with standards, specific coaching strategies and STEMS instead of always just theory.
Okay. I just want to add to that. Ryan, thank you so much. We have such a great team here. I feel so lucky that I can just sit here and they're providing all the great responses. I do want to say, like, it says, what is this going to replace? What an amazing question. And I really do feel like Cedar Rapids, we're right for this because there's so much foundation here already for us to build on. And so it's not so much about what does it replace, it really is what are we providing? And that's what the teachers have been asking for. So just in short, we feel like it brings clarity around what are the classroom expectations? It brings coherence and we have alignment between the curriculum, the intended curriculum that we have and the taught curriculum and the learned curriculum. And it brings consistency across all of our buildings. And I think that's important for us because as we're collecting data, as we're trying to utilize our resources to provide professional learning, as our campuses, and I see, we also have, Mike Waters has joined us here as well. The schools that are going first, which we will talk about next, it gives us the opportunity to have laboratory schools right here within our own district where we can send other teachers to be able to learn. And that's one of the things that we hear consistently across our staff members is, we need some things to be the same across our school district where we can all be moving in the same direction and provide the support. So I'm really excited and I believe that this answers the call instead of our teachers just, we're talking to them, telling them what they should be doing, but now we're getting in the trenches and we're providing the strategies and the support that they need to get the desired outcomes that we know that they want for their students.
So how do we select? How do we choose? How do we pick? All of our schools are deserving and all of our schools will be learning along with us with empowerment. All schools will be involved. However, we are looking at a few schools to be early implementers so that we can have lab schools and intensively work with them and the coaching to really get some progress and to help move us forward. So the schools that have been selected for these early implementers, and many are here tonight, very excited to be a part of this, is McKinley, Wilson, Roosevelt Taft, CRA, Johnson, Trailside, and City View.
And I also want to just add, we did not start out saying we wanted this many schools. I just want to say that because we kind of want to make sure that we have the fidelity that we can provide the support. But the schools were asking, as they learned about it, we try to take on as many as possible so that we have enough to be able to do great work, but also that we can sustain it. And so I just applaud the leadership for seeing this as an opportunity and say, and they raised their hand saying, I want to be a part of, I think this can make a difference at my campus.
Maybe you cover this. How are those selected? What was the process for that?
That's a great question. We first looked at priority schools. I'll just be honest about that. We know that those are important schools to support. Yes, based on the Iowa school performance, yeah. We also looked at ready principals that we felt were able to do this work and ready to do this work. And there was a lot of debate about what, what schools should be chosen, but to Dr. Grover's point, we had probably half this many chosen and more stepped up. So I'm pretty proud of them for that. Yeah, because this, we know this is a game changer for our students, but it's a lot of work for our teams and our principals and our teachers. So I wish I could say it was an exact formula, but it truly was the coalition of the willing that stepped up to do that. Nobody was forced to do this.
Yeah, I'll add to that. As you can see, we have a diverse group of schools on here. We want to make sure when we talk about equity, all means all. So we have schools that represent all different populations of our students. That's important. So even for our high-performance students, we want to make sure that they're being challenged and that they can go to the next level. And then of course, from this chair right here, we look at the financial resources that were available to us and how we can braid our funding in order to be able to support this work. So all of that came into play in regards to the schools that were selected.
Okay. I have a question about the schools too. So having been at GSA quite a bit, I know that they do have some project-based learning structures already in place. Do the rest of these schools also have that PBL base or is it hit or miss or?
Some do, some don't. City would certainly be one that would be that. They do a lot of work in our magnet schools that way and you'll see magnet schools on the list. But to Dr. Grover's point, it's very important that we focus on all students.
Sure.
And you'll also see schools on the list that are high-performing.
Mm-hmm.
So this, this next slide is just maybe a deeper dive into what we think will happen. We're looking at a lab school, at least one or two lab schools in year two so that we can bring not only our coaches to learn as we move through the system with this, but also new principals that we may have. And truly, one piece of this that I want to make sure that is clear, and it hasn't been clear as we've been working with staff, is that these are not the only schools that will be getting this learning. They will just be early implementers and being coached with instructional empowerment. Our academic team is planning to work alongside instructional empowerment as they move through learning so that we can take the learning to the other buildings even as soon as next year. So everyone will be getting this learning. So when will we be beginning? I went through this slide pretty carefully. We've already started some of the work in terms of exploring and defining what this looks like. There's been a fair amount of planning with instructional empowerment already. I will say that they customize all of their learning for districts and each of our buildings will have a comprehensive plan that will differ from the others. So we're not, it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all. So to end with any questions you may have. So to end with any questions you may have, I hope that we have shared with you at least enough information to build some confidence that we are trying to design a system that will get better results. I believe wholeheartedly that until we get into our classrooms and help teachers with their instructional focus and their instructional design, achievement will be always elusive. So our approach to this is to work alongside with instructional empowerment and help our teachers and our classrooms become high-learning, rigorous environments. So any questions you may have, we'd be happy to work through that. We have principals here. Thank you, Mike, for coming. Sure appreciate that, so.
Director Newman, go ahead.
I'm kind of curious, asking the former teacher right here. I get the feeling that this method isn't exactly new, it's just formalized and has a structure. And, you know, I think good teachers probably have that element of coaching as well as teaching. I mean, when you hear this, what do you, what do you think about it? Are you like, yeah, I was kind of doing that in a way?
Well, I, put me on the hot seat here. I think, I think every high-quality teacher is always reviewing their classroom outcomes. And as the student clientele changes, as the community changes, it's important for our teachers to be able to change how they're teaching and what they're teaching. And, I mean, we see that with our CTE emphasis right now. So I, this is just continuous improvement, I think, from the point of view of staff members. They are always, every day, at the end of the day, reviewing what happened that day and how can you do it better tomorrow. So this is just a framework to help teachers achieve that goal.
So kind of just building on what you asked and what you responded to, has there been any input from teacher-leader program, or has there been a survey of staff, teaching staff done?
During the exploring phase, we brought this to our principals and to our instructional coaches. I can tell you wholeheartedly that we've had, at least because of very good reasons, we've, we've had to say no to some of these buildings that would like to be an early implementer. Our instructional coaches, the books that we had on the table were gone. We gave them away, 80 of them, in just no time at all. They all want to learn more about this. I think they have a lot of questions, and they should. How this is going to fit, what kind of structures am I going to be asked to do? Is this going to change my world? Is this just going to change my life? How am I going to be, how am I going to be a supporter in this? But I, I feel very confident that, that we have support from our buildings and from our coaches to do this.
I guess appearing, oh, sorry. Just because it relates to that, I was curious about a survey or just any feedback, and I guess, looking at the other side of it, in your experience or in these exploration phases, has there been a very consistent, like, why, why would people push back, I guess? What's the, what's the other side of it? Why are people excited or not excited?
I think, I think from what I have observed and the communication I have, is it's another thing. We have, we have teachers that are overworked. They are tired. And there's no doubt in my mind that the person working hardest in the classroom is, is doing most of the work, they're doing most of the learning, they're carrying the cognitive load and the lift. And I have had the opportunity to visit many, many classrooms in my first six months, and the teachers are definitely working the hardest. It's concerning to me that we're going to burn them out. I feel like this is a lifeline and hope, because our teachers are working so very, very hard.
Can it be used as a recruiting tool, as we're trying to get teachers to come here? And how do we, just planting a seed, how do we use these early leaders to really start promoting that, or?
I think that's a great idea. Again, our entire cabinet has been a part of this. Our HR director, still sitting behind me here, he was able to be a part of much of the learning too. I think we're going to use anything we can to recruit teachers.
Yeah, right.
I would like to hear from the principals. I want to hear their feedback.
Specific to why we would jump up and say we want to do this, sir?
Well, we've already gone there. We're clear. One of the biggest concerns I have right now is I can hear some of the teachers saying, like Corinne said, another thing. Right? And I'm concerned about that. And then earlier, I think Michelle, is that her name? Kind of mentioned, like, we're going to go with the teachers that want to go, and the ones that don't, they'll just have to kind of catch up with the ones that will. And I'm really concerned about that, because I've heard feedback from the teachers that it kind of, these type of initiatives feel like one more thing. And if they don't clearly understand what it is, I just want to see better. I don't want them to feel like one more thing or something else that's being palled on, the ones that are not completely convinced that this is a good thing, or don't fully understand it.
I think, I'll let Jen and Mike speak for themselves. However, when I was sitting there with our staff, we were one of the schools that jumped up and said, can we get in on this?
Nice.
And the biggest reason is, we talked about it before I went and asked Corinne, was are we ready for another thing? Right? So that was the conversation we had to have, because we're obviously going through a lot and changing things daily sometimes. And what Cassidy and Dennis both thought was, this can help give us structure to what we're trying to do, which I totally agreed with. They use some of the agile principles in their, how they organize their teacher flow. They, it's all about collaboration, giving structure, like you mentioned, some of the things that we're trying to do and doing, that it just gives it more definition and terminology that we can activate. So that's why we did.
I would just say, just because I've had the experience to do a few of the walkthroughs, so first off, I guess a little asterisk, I'm learning too. So we're just beginning this exploring phase, so I know there's a lot of opportunity, but just initially, some of the thoughts I had is seeing all students actively engaged in, like, defining what that means. I was really hopeful around the word rigor. I think we've talked about rigor for years, but I haven't actually seen it come to full fruition. I see the teachers doing a lot of that heavy lift versus the students doing that. I'm super excited about the coaching model. I'm very passionate about coaching. I think we know any practice we put into place, if we don't have coaching alongside of us, we're not going to have the implementation that we want. So I think that is a very powerful aspect of this, and something that we've invested a long time and a lot of resources into our coaching over the years. I think this is just one more layer of support. And I think it's a more clear, again, I haven't seen all the resources, but I've sat in the training, a clear vision of what instructional model that we want. So we can walk into a classroom and set the stage for students doing the learning versus that teacher just sat up in the front and the student's hopefully gaining. We just have a very diverse group of students coming to us, and a lot are not coming with all that background knowledge that we want them to have. This is intended to help engage all students to help level that playing field, so students can actively engage in those conversations and be participants. It's a little bit more formalized than I think of the work we did around, oh, I think you're kind of alluding to a little bit, Jen, about, oh, I'm losing the name, like teaming, I can't think of the, we had it in classrooms, oh, like probably five, 10 years ago, but it's kind of coming back to be more intentional. And then, like, most importantly, I think, just getting to the rigor and the standards. So some of this, just in my initial experience, is nothing we haven't already spent a lot of time on. It's now coming back to it, and is the work we're doing super intentional? Is it focused on standards? Are students truly grappling and having that productive struggle versus us stopping the learning and then just giving it to them? Because then we don't, they're not walking away with and holding on to that learning. So we want them, someone mentioned CTE. What do we love about CTE is hands-on, kids grappling, getting in, that's what we love. This, I think, is going to be that framework to set the stage for that. So even in my short time, we did some classroom walks today. After initial training, I am in classrooms multiple times a week, and already my brain is like spinning like, oh, we could just tweak it this much. And so I just think it'll provide student, teachers the opportunity. And it is, anytime change is scary, but I think this is building on, Dr. Grover said. We have set the stage for this, this is just that next opportunity to provide clear expectations of what we want to see in our classrooms.
Very good. Thank you.
Let me jump in real quick.
All right.
We had a two-day training, I think it was the 12th and 13th.
Pull, pull your mic down.
I'm sorry. The 12th and 13th, prior to the winter break. And myself and our assistant principal and our coach were out of the building for two whole days. And I knew I would have some questions to answer when I went back to the building from our staff, saying, where the heck have you guys been for two days? And I wanted to get them information. And so we pondered at the end of those two days, what were we going to do? We had a professional development time set aside on Friday the 15th, and that was going to be the last time we saw them before they went off into winter break. So we kind of brainstormed, and we came up with a couple of things. We, we pulled a chapter out of this book, this is a book that Corinne was talking about that we all received a copy of. And there was, there's a part in here, and I just grabbed it from Ms. Nury, thanks for bringing it tonight. We copied the first chapter out of this book. We asked permission from, from the folks, and the first chapter is the introduction, and one paragraph here says, at the first sentence, excuse me, "Many teachers today feel beleaguered by an inflated curriculum, invading technology, dwindling resources, increased accountability for boosting test scores, and declining respect for the profession." And I thought, well, there's a hook. That'll, that'll get them to read the next nine pages in the introduction. The other thing is, number one thing that are on my teachers' minds at Wilson, and I think this is across Cedar Rapids, Iowa, the United States, is student behavior. And so we went into the instructional empowerment website, if you go into topic, I think up at the top it says research, and then there's probably a dozen different articles in there that are research-based stuff, examples of things that have taken place using this information. We happened to find a middle school that had very much our demographics in Nebraska, Midwest, pulled that out and said, hey, when, when they implemented this, this stuff in their district, at that particular school, this is what happened with student behavior. So I thought, okay, we'll take chapter one from this, and then we'll talk about student behavior and bring them, those two things together. So we put together a quick professional development. All that to say, the background of, we hooked them really quickly. They talk about the willing coalition of teachers that want to get involved in this work. And Dr. Toth talked in our training that, once a school has 40% of their teachers that are willing to jump on board and do this work, it happens at lightning speed. We already have 25% at Wilson, just based on about an hour's worth of stuff. Read a couple of things, let's talk about this. So I think it really speaks to what teachers are yearning for. Long answer to your short question, but.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Other questions? I think it also coincides very, very nicely with our change in the calendar and allowing teachers that focus time for professional development, so the timing is good also.
And additionally, I think it allows us to scale up on that HRX context. So we're not, I mean, we're building on, we're not running to a brand-new startup, it's a scale-up of an existing.
So based on our timeline that you've outlined, and based on the student achievement increases that you outlined at the beginning, does this set us up for that 80% success? Is that still high? Will we surpass? I mean, where do we fall based on what we think will happen?
I, I feel like our achievement will go up. How much? How fast? I don't know. I'm learning maybe, maybe two weeks ahead of Jen. But I do know that I believe, wholeheartedly, that this is what our district needs to get excited. You saw our three principals, they, I didn't prompt them, I mean, they, they are excited about this. I think we all need some hope for better, and I truly believe that our achievement will go up. I don't, I don't expect that, I don't expect that we will have 100% of our teachers buying in all of the time, but I think we're going to have a critical mass, and we will move through the system that way. We, we don't have a one-year plan, we have a multi-year plan.
Thank you, Corinne, and your team.
Thank you.
We enjoyed the presentation.
Yeah.
I think it might be snowing. So is there a motion to adjourn the work session and the regular board? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same say. We are adjourned.
Goodbye.
They might have questions.